I'd like to call to order the September 14th meeting of the Shelby Township Planning Commission. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Dallo?
Here.
Mr. DeSico?
Here.
Ms. Cassali?
Here.
Mr. Bernardi?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Appone, absent. Mr. Vier?
Here.
Chairman Moffitt, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Next is approval of the agenda. If there are no corrections.
Support.
Move by DeSico, support by Moore. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next is approval of the minutes from the August 24th meeting.
Move.
Support.
Move by Dalu, support by Turner. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, this evening, we have four primary items. Site plans, two of them, public hearings. We'll begin with the first one, and I'll ask the Secretary to read the notices published.
Charter Township of Shelby, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following amendment to the zoning map. Applicant, Michael Donello, Vanguard Equity Management, LLC, 101 South Main Street, Rochester, Michigan, 48307. Rezoning request, O1 professional office to R12 multiple-family low-rise. Location, south side of 25 Mile Road, east of mound road. Sidwell number is as follows, 23-07-09-101-012, 23-07-09-101-013, and 23-07-09-101-014. Legal description is as follows. The Planning Commission will meet on Monday, September 14th, 2015, at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Municipal Building, 52700 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, 5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the rezoning application. The application for rezoning, zoning ordinance text, and zoning map may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal building, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett, Chair. This was published in Shelby Utica News on August 26, 2015. There are 276 property owners, three applicants, and nine utilities were notified by first-class mail on August 26, 2015.
So, did you get snubbed there, or your name wasn't on the notice? What happened?
Oh, that's okay.
Not offended?
No, I'm not offended. I'm fine with it.
Mr. Kirk, did the notice meet, short of the omission, the serious omission, did the notice meet all legal requirements?
Yes, it did.
Okay, thank you. Secretary Moore, did we receive any correspondence?
Yes, we did, Mr. Chair. In fact, this evening, we did receive one from Joan and Michael May. They are basically against the rezoning request because of all the construction and basically the congestion of the area.
Okay, thank you. The format for the public hearing was as follows. The petitioner representative will give a presentation stating the reasons for their request. Commissioner may then ask questions. I'll then open the floor to the public for their comments or questions, and then finally allow the petitioner to make concluding remarks. I see the petitioner's representative is here. If I could get your name and address for the record?
Sure. Pete Snyder, Urban Land Consultants, 8800 23 Mile Road, Shelby Township, here representing the petitioner. Essentially, the piece, there are three pieces involved. They total about 3.8 acres. They're, the aggregate parcels on the south side of 25 Mile Road, just east of the gas station. And it is currently zoned office at this point. The petitioner would like to rezone it to residential, hence the rezoning request. The piece itself is a bit of a transitional piece between the strong commercial on the corner, and as you go easterly across there, there's this piece, and then there's two other R1B parcels until you get to the driveway for the school. Really, that whole section is a bit transitional. It's hard to really put a finger on exactly what it should be. This is as reasonable a request for a transitional piece as there can be. Again, multifamily being a good transition between commercial and really pretty much anything else. It's also sort of parallel with what's going on on the north side of 25 Mile Road. On the north side of 25, there's commercial on the corner, and then there's Westchester Place, which is R12, and then Shelbyan Manor, which is also R12, and then Kingswood Manor, which is also R12, before you get to the R1B. So, that stretches more than all the way across this particular parcel's frontage. So, we feel R12 is a reasonable request. So, without, you know, if you have specific questions, I can discuss them with you. We've, of course, done a bunch of planning layouts. I know in Shelby, you're not really required or even sort of prohibited from submitting layouts, but I did bring a layout if someone were interested, so.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the petitioner from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Snyder, you said you would like to have it rezoned, and I know we all like, I'm
sure the petitioner would like that. Can you explain to me why you believe the property cannot be developed as office?
One of the biggest issues presented at this property is the low area in the front. There's some wetlands associated with the drain. Maybe I should switch to the mobile mic. Here I am. So, and any of you, again, I drive by this site multiple times in a day usually. As you look at the site from 25 Mile Road, there's a drain that comes through. It's not a drain, it's an open water course that drains underneath through Westchester, and then underneath 25, and then over in this corner. This whole area is quite low. It's going to be kind of hard to get an office to present very well from 25. Pretty much, you're looking at putting your development as far southerly as you can on the parcel, which really doesn't play very well towards an office setting, and it probably won't, you know, it's just going to be quite a bit back. You know, could it, in some theoretical sense, be developed as office? Yeah, it probably could. But I think multifamily is a reasonable request for this transitional piece.
Mr. Chairman, I've had some questions from Mr. Nguyen, if that'd be appropriate now?
Sure.
Mr. Nguyen, in the notes that you provided to us with this, you mentioned this area being designated as a hamlet designation. Could you explain what that is for me?
It was meant to be a small, little mixed-use districts at certain locations in the township, at certain intersections. And this intersection was designated as that where you could have some commercial and some, maybe some multiple-family in a little different setting.
And you also note that the hamlet density of six units per acre is appropriate, and yet this request is for R12 per acre. So, that would be outside what would be considered appropriate under the hamlet.
Well, yeah, that hamlet designation. I think the fact that part of that parcel is a little bit harder to develop may justify a little higher density. I think I'm looking at more the land use than the actual yield of it, which would, you know, maybe that they don't even achieve that yield either, based, because we haven't really, I've seen a plan, Mr. Snyder's shown, but I haven't really reviewed it.
Now, I understand the hamlet is designed to have different uses within an area, and it seems like if we did, personally, I can't see why we would want to mirror on the south what's on the north, just because there's R12 on the north, we should mirror it on the south. I don't really see that. Is there any, do you believe that the R1 parcel to the east of this, those two parcels, could be developed as a traditional R1B residential subdivision?
Well, there are homes on both of them.
Right.
And one, actually, the one that's a budding that has a home on, the one that's kind of adjacent to the Mallow entrance, high school, or junior high entrance, has a home and a business on it that shouldn't be there, which we're working to fix with the ordinance or, you know, enforcement. So, I mean, there are those individual parcels. I don't think you could just do another R1B development there.
Because I'm concerned, I know that both the office and the R12 is a transitional piece between residential and commercial, but I believe if residential there would be a more appropriate buffer, would be the office, I think. And Mr. Snyder did say theoretically it could be developed. I guess that means, yeah, it probably could be developed as office. I don't really see the need to add more R12 on that side personally. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vier.
Mr. Snyder, does the applicant own the property?
No, the applicant's in the process of purchasing the property. This is part of a due diligence process for them.
Does the zoning would make him, he would go forward if he gets the rezoning?
I don't know the answer to that question.
You talked about the possibility of wetlands in the front. How much of that wetlands impacts your property?
We haven't had a wetlands delineation done as of yet. I've walked it personally. There's a section, certainly the triangle from the water course over to the property line here is certainly not going to be usable. How far it extends this way would take a biologist to know, but, you know, we are talking about, you know, a fairly significant piece of this parcel here as wetlands. And it's compounded a little bit, because no matter what you do here, whether it's office, whether it's residential, the road commission's going to allow you one place and one place only for your driveway, and that's lining up straight across from Westchester. And that happens to be right where the drain ends. So, you know, we've got a culvert to extend, we've got to convince the DEQ, we'll have dueling jurisdictions here. The DEQ will say, move it so you don't touch the wetlands, and the road commission will say, no, you can't move it, it's got to line up. I think the road commission wins that argument, but we're going to have to figure out what to do with that. It does, it is a significant extra expense on this piece of property.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vier.
Mr. Snyder, the impact of the wetlands on this property would cut down on your buildable area?
Yes, certainly.
Then, the total buildable area is 3.8 acres?
No, that's the gross area. The buildable area would be subtracting out the 25 Mile Road right of way.
I'm trying to get to the point of where your buildable area would accommodate 12 units per acre.
The best...
You, excuse me just a minute. You suggest you want to put 39 units. Is it, in fact, the property that you have to build on, it seems to me that's a high number. What do you say?
The best layout for this property is actually 36 units.
Is what?
Thirty-six. I have, there's a very nice layout, it's the layout that I've shown.
What did you have on your application? I thought it was...
There's, in Shelby, you're not, we asked for R12, because R12 is, I think we have to ask for R12, because R10 doesn't get you to 36 units, so.
Looking at 3.81 acres, right?
Yes, 3.81 acres. That's gross, which includes the 25 Mile Road right of way.
And you've asked for 39 units?
No. Well, R12, I mean, your attorney will tell you, once you rezonate R12, you can put as many as you can fit. The best layout for this property is a 36-unit layout in two buildings, so, and that's the layout that the applicant has told me they wish to proceed with if they do get the rezoning approved.
Mr. Snyder, on your letter from Urban Land, it says 39 units.
That would be the maximum potential that could go on the site.
Based on 3.8 acres?
Correct.
But it's conceivable that you will not have that much property to build on. Is that right or wrong?
That's certainly true, yes.
And then what would you do?
You have to build on what's there, so it only goes down from there.
To what standard, though? To 10 per acre, or? It certainly wouldn't be 39 units, would it?
No, it won't be 39 units. I don't think you'd get 39 units. But if I ask for R10, I only get 30. I think there's potential for more than 30.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Nguyen.
It's been my experience that if the zoning will, the zoning just establishes the maximum. It doesn't really tell you what you can get when you actually lay it out on a site plan, because every site's a little different. He may think they can do 36, maybe it's less than that. So, until we see a site plan, there's really no, and evaluate it based on all the standards of the ordinance, there's no way of knowing that for sure. I think Mr. Snyder's giving his best estimate based on what his understanding of the ordinance is.
This is for a recommendation of the board?
Yes, it is.
I'm just not comfortable with the way this is explained to me, when you talk of 39 units. You've got 3.8 acres, and you've got wetlands, you don't know, they've not been delineated at this time, right? So, where are we with this, Mr. Nguyen?
Well, it's just a recommendation based on what you think the use of the property would be without a site plan specific. There is another way to do this, too. The other way of doing this is, if you'd like to see a plan attached to the rezoning, you know, the applicant can submit simultaneous applications showing all of that, so you have the complete picture in front of you. That is another option.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vier.
You have any thoughts, Mr. Snyder, when you may be able to tell us how much wetlands on this property?
Not being a wetland biologist myself, I can't do the delineation myself. Certainly, again, normally, the first step's, of course, a rezoning. We've been through this many times. Then, at a rezoning, we go through, we'll do detailed, detailed survey, TOPOL, fix every, I can't even honestly say for sure that the acreage is right, because we haven't done the detailed survey on it. So, we have a detailed survey to do, we have detailed topography to do, then we have a wetlands delineation to do. If, even if the rezoning were approved here tonight, go to the board the next available meeting, you probably wouldn't see a site plan until November, December, maybe, before you'd actually see a site plan specific.
Now, didn't you indicate that you had a site plan, but you...
We've done feasibility layouts, lots of them, so.
Without knowing what the wetland coverage is?
Just based on the topography. Should I flip it around and show?
They want to see it, there's no harm in that.
Yeah, okay.
So, when I walk the property, non-biologist that I am, and I get into the woods about 20 or 30 feet, that ground is roughly three to four feet higher than the top of bank, and I don't see anything that I know as wetland species. So, I think the wetlands line is just inside the woods, right through here. So, what we did is, we developed a layout that tooks everything to the back, has a nice low area with a detention pond there on 25, presents very nicely from 25 Mile Road, a pair of buildings with the parking in the rear. Just, you know, for those of you who remember the Harvard Oaks style building, that's sort of the picture for this building style. This is 36 units, and I think it's probably the most reasonable layout for this property at any, you know, at the R12 zoning. I don't, and again, I'm not against a condition, if you think 36 is okay, and you want to cap it there, you know, I'm not totally against a conditional rezoning of some sort, or a zoning agreement that caps it at 36, to go down if the wetlands is more extensive than my non-biologist eye thinks it is.
Okay, back to the board. Any additional questions?
One other thing, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vier.
If this is approved rezoning, Mr. Nguyen, when will we know what's going to be placed there, and how many units?
You wouldn't know that for sure until they submit a site plan. That's why we do have that other option in the ordinance that allows for conditional rezoning, that allows you to tie the site plan into the rezoning.
Which would mean an affirmative vote tonight, and then...
Or you could just postpone it and ask them to submit the site plan along with that.
You've got me a little confused, because with this one, we don't have any of the notable wetlands, and you recommend approval, and the next one on the agenda, you recommend to not approve at this time, yet it looks like to me somewhat of the same circumstance. Just a thought, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
We'll skin that cat when we get to it. All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Snyder. This is, this is the only public hearing, the Planning Commission will hold on this rezoning request. Your remarks will be entered into the record for Township Board evaluation. The Planning Commission is a recommending body. The Township Board will take into consideration these comments when making the final decision on the rezoning. At this time, anyone from the audience is welcome to come up and offer their thoughts, comments, or ask any questions. I just would need your name and address.
Dennis Arns, 54950 Mound. I'm the guy that's got the gas station. They were talking, somebody wrote a comment about additional traffic. There'd be an easy way of fixing that. If you guys would sell the county a couple feet of that road to where they could make that a five-lane road going all the way into...
Two, let you address the board, okay?
Pardon me?
Address the board.
Oh, sorry. Make that a five-lane road going all the way into the junior high, because the way they have that road now, that road backs up all the way to Shelby Road sometimes in the morning when they're dropping off the kids for the junior high. And the only other comment I have is, right in back of the bank, all of the water from the bank basically drains onto that site. There's no catch basin, there's no storm sewers or anything like that, so if they could tie a ditch to that bank to where all that water goes out of there, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to comment?
Hello, my name is Glennak Hay. I'm Windermere Condominium resident, which is north of 25 Mile and west, or, excuse me, east of mound. We're interested basically in the type of condominiums that are being proposed, the quality of them, how they'll affect our residents, and we're also interested in the traffic, as we've been discussing so far.
My name is Joan May. I wrote the letter, and I'm against it, because there's too much traffic already. There's a higher average number of crimes in that corner, if you look at the Macomb County crime map. And I think it's just from all the multi-housing, you know, place in that corner. So, I really don't want to see any more, you know, multifamily units, and they didn't even say if they're condominiums or if they're apartments, so. But we are concerned.
Okay, thank you. There will answer, yeah, I'm going to call them back up after, if I get all the questions. Anyone else wish to comment? Going once, twice, three times? Okay, Mr. Nguyen, your thoughts?
Just two thoughts, and one is, I would agree that this is a transitional site from the corner to the residential to the east on the road, and I think that's, our multiple-family's not an uncommon transitional land use, and that the, I think, the R12 does, you know, match what's across the street. There's a kind of a cohesion with that, which I think has some relevance at all, so those are the two factors I think were meaningful from our evaluation.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Snyder, drainage from the bank, are you aware of the draining into the property?
Yes, I've walked that area, and that would be placed in an enclosed storm sewer and routed through, and it will end up in the water course along 25 Mile Road. So, yes, I'm aware of that.
Okay, what about expanding 25 Mile?
There are, yes. The short answer is yes. We would at least be extending that fifth lane, turning lane, across our frontage. Of course, the applicant doesn't own the parcels next to it between there and the driveway, but I certainly agree with the comment that was made. It really needs the fifth lane all the way through, over to the school.
Okay. And now, while we're not addressing site plan, I mean, have you, as an architect looked at, have you considered what type of dwelling you'd put on that property?
At this stage, to my knowledge, there has not been an architect looking at a specific building or a specific building type. I've given some rough parameters, obviously, I showed a rough parameter building on the feasibility layout.
Okay, apartment versus condo rental owner?
Nor have I discussed that either.
Okay.
The basic building style that he's looking at, though, again, if you're familiar with Harvard Oaks on the south side of Lakeside Boulevard, almost across from Lifetime Fitness, there's some multifamily there. That's the style building that I'm showing on the feasibility plan.
Okay. And then, one of the residents mentioned the high crime rate in that area, or higher crime rate?
It may be some, related to the R12. It's probably more likely related to the proximity to the school.
Yeah, I think I heard that comment, yeah. Okay. Back to the board, any final comments? Hearing, Mr. Dalu.
Mr. Snyder, the approximate size of the potential building that you showed us, that there is six, the size of that building will be approximately what? Considering to, if we leave it an office, is it going to be the same size, similar sizes, bigger, smaller? After all?
I'm a bit at a disadvantage answering the question, because we haven't done a layout for an office there, so I don't know how the square footage would turn out. My suspicion is the buildings, the square footage would be smaller, but the parking would be bigger, and the traffic would be generally equivalent, maybe a little higher with office, but of course, it's off residential, you're going to see your peak traffic in the morning, in the evening. With an office, you're going to see peak just a little later in the morning and earlier in the afternoon, compared to a residential.
That's what I wanted to see, the traffic.
But the traffic is, traffic is going to be roughly similar to the, whether it's residential or whether it's office, I don't think makes a big difference for the traffic.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Oh, no.
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Our decision on this must be based on the following, for the rezoning, practicality of this rezoning request, and the effect on the surrounding area, the owner's right to use his land, do current growth and development patterns warrant this rezoning, and is the proposed rezoning in accordance with the master plan. We may recommend approval, disapprove, or table to evaluate the information received this evening. This time, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Turner.
I move to recommend denial to the Township Board of Trustees, a rezoning petition number 06-15 for Michael Donello, rezoning from O1 professional office to R12 multiple-family low-rise for the following reasons. The applicant has not demonstrated that the parcels in question cannot be developed as currently zoned, O1. The current O1 zoning classification is a more preferable transitional land pattern between commercial and R1B, and the R12 zoning request exceeds what is considered appropriate for this area of the township, and has the potential of posing nuisances to area residents and businesses, as well as Mallow Junior High and Eisenhower High School.
Support.
Okay, moved and supported. Any questions on the motion?
I'll be voting against this motion. My preference would be to table it, to allow the applicant to bring a site plan parented with it, so we can get a better understanding of what that use is. And like Mr. Snyder, I drive by that multiple times a day. I live in that neighborhood. I don't necessarily think this is, would be a bad thing to the neighborhood, and I think it might actually might clean up that area if it's done correctly, if it's done within reason, to which I agree with Mr. Vier, we really don't know that right now, not seeing it. But with having said that, I'll undertake, we'll take the roll call.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Dalu?
No.
Mr. DeSico?
No.
Commissioner Cassali?
No.
Commissioner Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Vier?
Yes.
Chair votes no. Motion fails. Is there another motion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cassali.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone the submission of this application until we can receive a site plan to go along with the rezoning application. Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Questions on the motion?
What is the motion, Mr. Chairman?
Is to postpone action on the rezoning and request that a, an accompanying site plan be submitted with it.
I thought there was a motion to...
To deny it.
Yeah.
Failed, defeated.
No, this is to table it.
This one is to table it.
Mr. Turner's was to deny it.
And one was denied, one we voted on went down, failed. So this is the table.
Oh, okay. I don't know why we're having a second vote.
Because the motion denied, to deny it, was failed.
Failed. We'd have to have an affirmative vote on something.
Well, there is no motion right currently.
Okay.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Commissioner Casali?
Yes.
Mr. DeCico?
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu?
Yes.
Mr. Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
No.
Commissioner Turner?
No.
Commissioner Vire?
No.
And chair votes yes. Okay, next item, is site plan number 15-19, special land use number seven. Also, public hearing, Commissioner Moore, would you read the publication?
Charter Township of Shelby. Notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following special land use. Applicant, Mike Castellana, 48657 Hayes Road, Shelby Township, Michigan, 48315. Proposed use, senior housing facility, 99 units. Location, Van Dyke Avenue, west side of Van Dyke, between 24 Mile Road and 25 Mile Road. Sidwell number, 23-07-09-426-002. Legal description is as follows. Planning Commission will meet on Monday, September 14, 2015, at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Municipal Building, 52700 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, 5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the special land use application. The application for special land use and the site plan may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal building Monday through Friday from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett, Chair. Published in Shelby Utica News on August 26, 2015, there were 39 property owners and four applicants were notified by first-class mail on August 26, 2015.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kirk, did the publication meet all legal requirements?
Yes, it did.
And can you explain the uses under the present zoning and if the special land use request is appropriate?
Current use is, the zone is R-12, which is our residential multifamily district. In this district, this type of use is a permitted special land use with township approval.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Moore, did we receive any correspondence on--
Yes, we did, Mr. Chair. In fact, this evening, we did receive a letter from Mr. and Mrs. Savage, and basically, they have a list of nine questions that they want addressed. Do I have, do you want me to read all the questions, or no?
Why don't we see if they're ones that aren't answered, we'll ask the petitioner. Okay, the format for the public hearing this evening will be as follows. The petitioner representative will give a presentation stating the reasons for their request. Commissioners may then ask questions of the petitioner. I'll then open the floor to the public for any questions or comments, and then finally allow the petitioner to make concluding remarks. At this time, is the petitioner, if I get your name and address, what you're requesting and the reasons for it.
Good evening. Simon Morrow, Morrow Engineering at 48657 Hayes Road in Shelby Township, representing the owner, Mike Castellana, is in the stand here, and also Bill Thompson is with us, civil engineer that did the delineation of the wetlands and everything that was laid out. And the architect was Frank Salamoney that prepared the architectural plans. We're requesting 99-unit senior complex. It's located on Van Dyke Road, just south of 25 Mile Road, approximately a quarter mile south on the west side of the road. It's in your Section 9. The present zoning is R-12. The surrounding zoning around the parcel is R-12. This parcel was part of a larger parcel that, at one time, it was all delineated, done by Dominic Maschieri, that he had the 40 acres tied up, and there was extensive work done with Jeff King, and I have that information here, and I understand you guys didn't have it, and I brought one for everybody, that Bill Thompson did the delineation of the wetlands, and we located the wetlands, so we know what the impacts are at the wetlands. We've been working with Jeff King and the DEQ to formalize and see the least amount of impacts, and we know we're gonna have to get a permit from the DEQ, because that would be the next step, and that's what Bill Thompson has said also. We kinda needed some direction to go forward, because we understand we need a special land use. So as far as looking at the project, let me just go over it a little bit, and then I'll answer any questions anybody may have regarding the wetlands. It's a 99-unit complex. It's a three-story building. There's 22 single, and there's 11 unit, 22 units on one floor of one-bedroom units, and there's 11 units of two-bedroom units, and there's a cafeteria, there's a lunchroom. I think I gave it in a packet, I don't know if anyone had a chance of seeing it.
Mr. Simon, if you're gonna, if you're gonna talk over there, take the mic here.
My bald spots. The building's gonna be completely brick with some, just to give it some accent strips, and it'll be balconies, and it's kind of a nice-looking building. It fits into surroundings, which, like I said again, the surrounding areas are also zoned R-12. As far as traffic concerns, Van Dyke is a five-lane roadway where multifamily, this isn't a multifamily, this is--
Use one or the other, but both kinda screws them up.
This is a senior complex. There's not gonna be a lot of drives, a lot of car trips, you know, during the day, so I don't believe that this type of a development would have a huge impact on traffic on Van Dyke Road. It'll be a lesser impact. The way we laid out the buildings, and Mr. Thompson will get a chance to say his piece, it was laid out strategically to where we had the least amount of wetland impacts. We realize, and we're sensitive to the wetlands, we're gonna create a detention pond, and there's a cannon drain we have to cross, so there's some floodplains in there. It's a challenging site. We have to build a little culvert that, believe it, 10 by 10, it's probably gonna do it, a concrete box culvert. But these are all things that are gonna come out with a permit from the DEQ. As far as the development, if everything goes right, hopefully by next year, we'll try to go in the ground. There's been a huge demand for this type of housing in the area. Right now, there's, like every, every one of them, they're almost full, and I think this is a great location for it. It's across the street from Palazzo Grande, across the street from the funeral home. I mean, it's, it's kinda, everything's in the area. I think we're the next generation going in--
You're taking this full-service housing a little far.
So we're here to answer any questions. You may have our engineers here also, and he's here to answer any questions. Bill, you wanna speak up? Do you mind if I pass these out? This is Jeff King's report.
Mr. Win, have you seen this?
No, I haven't.
There's a florist over there, too, so you got it all covered, yeah.
Good evening. My name is Bill Thompson from Lainer Associates. Simon said, I didn't delineate the wetlands, I tied them in after they were delineated, because like Pete, I'm not a wetland specialist. Jeff King is a wetland specialist. He delineated the wetlands, we tied them in and showed them on the plans. This site has significant impact on wetlands, floodplain, and actually, there's another permit required for inland lakes and streams for the drain crossing. To me, this is the first step in the process. We need some kind of an indication from the township that this is, yes, this is a suitable use for the property, the configuration is okay. At that point, we go to the DEQ and address their concerns, which are gonna be complicated and long-lasting and long, it's gonna take a while to get them done. So we see this as a first step in the process. The next step would be contacting with the DEQ, looking at mitigating the wetlands, purchasing wetland credits probably, how we impact the floodplain, and how we impact the, and I believe this is in the middle portion of the Clinton River, not the cannon drain, how we impact the water course.
Yeah, one of, one of the, one of the standards that we have to consider when making a recommendation on this is compatibility with the natural environment, and, you know, I know there's a line there, you know, and maybe I'll look to Mr. Win, too, to sort of offer some maybe guidance on this, too, but, I mean, this seems, these seem pretty significant, and so, you're putting this building right in the middle of these wetlands, you know, from what I saw, right? Right in the middle of these wetlands. I mean, it's, it seems to be a lot of wetlands to mitigate, but are you telling me you really don't know what that's gonna be until you want us to give approval? So it's kinda like, you know, cart-horse here. I mean, how, you know, give approval when we really, I'm not real sure as to what that impact's gonna be on the, I mean, you guys don't really know the--
What we have--
Sorry, Simon? No, come on up, yeah.
We've been talking to Jeff, and Jeff's had communication with Andrew Hartz at the DEQ. I mean, we have, there's several ways to go about it. I mean, in a portion, there's an upland that we're sacrificing, so it's like a give-and-take within the own project. Then if we run out of credits, we, I did the math, I think we're about .59 of an acre's impact, so we may have to purchase credits, so it's like a two-to-one ratio. We may have to buy one acre of wetland, which is like 75,000. It's not a deal breaker on a project like this. I think the important thing is to have your blessing, to see if we can go forward, because there's gonna be a lot of monies, attorneys, and engineering fees, and wetland studies, and a lot of things that has to be done, and, you know, we just needed some clear indication whether or not the community accepted a project of this type for the area, with the zoning, which we feel we have the zoning, it's compatible to the area, and--
Let me ask a question, and it's, this is, you know, I never want to be in position to tell you what, you know, or your clients what to build. I mean, it's your money, as long as it conforms to--
Township standards.
Township standards, that's fine, but, you know, we did approve a fairly significant, maybe Mr. Win can refresh my memory, senior housing complex in the, in the project, that the multiple-phase project that the Mancini family's doing, just maybe 100 feet, 100 feet to the north.
Right.
You think that the demand is such that, you know, that all can be accommodated, absorbed by that?
I think we're gonna be looking for a house pretty soon ourselves.
Okay.
We're the next generation to go. No, it's the baby boomers--
When I drive by and I see a bunch of, you know, for-rent signs, I'm thinking, oh, great, well, I approve.
Well, these won't be for rents, I think--
Are you gonna sell these?
No, 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 no. They're the seniors, well, yeah, for rent, not individual for rent. I don't know how that works, if the hospitals bring them in, I'm not quite sure. I remember, not an operator, but, you know, operator would have to come in, like American House or somebody like that, to operate that. So I don't, I don't know exactly the details of it, but--
Any other comments? I'm sorry if I kinda threw your presentation off a little. Okay.
We're here to answer any questions or concerns that the board may have.
So Mr. Win, why don't you give your thoughts first?
Yeah, the principal concern that we had is what, what the discussion we've been having is the impact on the wetlands. I did talk to Simon and Bill today to make sure that they have, if they had any other documentation to bring in tonight, because we really hadn't, hadn't shared that, and I didn't, I wanted them to be as fully prepared as they could be, and if there's a way to address that subject, too, I mean, I'm willing to consider that. The rest of the site plan is pretty compliant. The, the building does exceed the maximum length for a multifamily unit of 180 feet, and the zoning board appeals has granted those variances in the past for buildings like this, where you have, you don't have a flat facade, it's broken up, and that's not the problem, this is a nicely-designed building. The footprint, that footprint, however, is not reflected on the site plan, it shows it just as a flat facade, so that's just a coordination between the architect and the engineer. I would agree that I don't think a traffic study is particularly meaningful when you have a five-lane road like this, because we've planned that, we widened the road already in anticipation of development, you know, we're ahead of where we used to be in that regard. Showing a detailed roof-mounted equipment, if there's going to be any, the fire department had some comments about fire suppression and fire lanes, but the site plan itself is, you know, is a well-done plan. It's really compliant, and I don't think the issue is what impact this has on the surrounding property, because, you know, it's tucked in the back, it's all zoned multiple. I don't think those are issues at all, it's really that more fundamental question, can they make it work? And, you know, the one option would be, well, you move it down the road, and subject to those things being resolved, if the site plan changes, then they have to come back. Because I'd want them to be able to do that, and maybe that we'd actually see if they could even get that before we take it to the board for the next step. So it's a question of timing more than anything. This does help to at least know there's some indication of, there was some logic to how they got the wetland on there. And it may be that they have to go back and resurvey that if something's changed, and, you know, it's been 15, it's been 10 years.
11, yeah, it was 11 years ago, is, and there, you know, there's been some significant alterations to the landscape there, probably to the benefit of, or, you know--
It might be.
Drain, I mean, a lot of that's probably drained, they've cleaned and straightened that drain, so my thought would be it's probably not as wet as it was back 11 years ago.
If you were, to move it along, even before it went to the board, at least like some correspondence from Mr. Hartz indicate that the site has some, that there is some opportunity to move this forward, rather than having to, you know, it does do anybody any good to come back and redo it all over again, so. I mean, this isn't a situation where we got the wrong use at the wrong location, just a matter of making sure it fits on the site.
To the board, any questions for the petitioner? Mr. Chairman? Mr. Vire?
I, like Mr. Win, think it is a good project. Could you estimate what the investment will be there?
Glad you asked that. It's at least a $10 million project.
How much?
10 million. It's approximately $100,000 per unit, there's 99 units, that's $9.9 million.
And how many jobs would you bring to the community?
Quite a few.
No, no. Quite a few could be--
At least, at least 130 jobs between the different shifts.
What does it mean to you, construction-wise, for it to be postponed by government again?
Everything, time is of the essence, always, I mean--
You like that question?
And lately, I have to tell this board, just off the record, it is so difficult to get things approved, because no one wants to approve anything. It's just delays, 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 whether it be through the engineering of Fazl Khan or through, through the road commission or the drain office, it just seems like it's impossible to get projects approved lately. It's, and so the help of the community to help stream the things along. I mean, we have to get our permits, we have to get our DNR permit, we have to get our water and sewer permits, we have to get our road commission permits for the approaches, we have to get our DEQ, DNR, we have to go through all those steps. So we realize that we can't build this without our permits, so you, by an approval today, you're not issuing permits, you're kinda giving us a little green light, hey, yes, maybe we could go down that road, let's go get everybody down, and let's see what we can go next, and start applying for some of these permits and doing our engineering, because there's gonna be a lot of extensive studies and things of that nature. We do have a wetland delineation already, we know where they're at. Bill has been working with Jeff King before, we're gonna have to do a lot of work ahead of us, we understand.
Mr. Vire?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Win, you acknowledged it was a good project, right?
Yes.
Why would we want to hold him up, if we are holding him up? What would it mean to the project if we delay it in, in the eyes of the, of government here?
I'm not sure I understand.
You don't understand the question?
Well, no.
I mean, we're in the habit of kicking everything down the road here and not approving these projects as, just like Mr. Morrow said. So if you're ready, is it time for a motion?
I can't wait, let me, I, I think there's a way to do that, to move it forward without compromising the process.
I don't wanna, well, I don't know whether we compromise the process or not. Sometimes the process compromises the building, and that's, that's certainly true also. So whatever it is, I'm, I'm for as little government intervention as possible, and so we go on with the process, Mr. Chairman, if you like.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to ask any questions? Mr. Casali?
Mr. Chair, yes.
You look like you wanna say something.
I just need some clarification, and maybe this question is to Mr. Win. Tonight, we can, we can vote on our approval of the, of how the, of the, of the special land use, providing that all of the necessary permits are granted in order to use the property as, as required, or as--
Correct. That would be, that would be an appropriate condition, absolutely, because there are very few other site plan corrections necessary here.
Okay.
It's not like some where we have a list, a laundry list, that's not the case in the site plan. They've corrected those things during the preliminary process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. This will be the only public hearing the Planning Commission will hold on this special land use request. All remarks will be entered into the record for Township Board evaluation. We are a recommending body, and the Township Board will evaluate our recommendation, which is the legislative body. The--
The Township Board will make final decision on the special land use request. At this time, I'll invite anyone from the public wishing to ask a question or offer their comments on this proposal. And I would need you to name an address and sign in, please.
Hi, my name is Wayne Bowers. I live on 8296 Pine Creek Drive. As far as the wetlands and stuff like that, what I'm here is, my concern is, there's a lot of trees over there, there's a lot of animals over there, and all I'm seeing in Shelby Township anymore is we're just clear cutting and slapping buildings up. I understand that there's a need for elderly living, shall I say. I just don't think that this is the right piece of property to be doing it on. If we've already looking at maybe going north of this already, and we have other sections of property in the township that have already been cut down and started to be developed, I think maybe we should look into another place that this might fit into. I just don't think that this is a right time to be going ahead and whacking a whole bunch more trees down to put up another building.
Okay.
I mean, there's, it's not that it's just a wetland. I mean, I live across the street from there, and there's deer in there, and there's rabbit, and there's wild turkeys, and they're already having a hard time because of the development that's going on 25 and Van Dyke. And this has been going on for a long time. Now you want to come and start clear cutting another section of land? I mean, that was the whole idea that people come out here, Shelby Township, you got the beautiful trees and you got part of nature. We don't need to just build this up, tar and cement. And also, I had one other question for the people here. Is this going to be any type of an assisted living or a government subsidized living? That was another question that I would like to ask.
Okay, I'll, we're going to take all the questions, we'll ask them all at once. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Does anyone else wish to ask any questions or offer comment? Going once, twice, three times? Okay. The correspondents that we received had a couple of questions, so I'm just going to run through them real quick. How many buildings? There was just the one building, three stories high, 99 units, how many bedrooms? Because it's a mixture of one and two bedrooms, correct?
Total bedrooms?
Yeah.
I, I believe there's 99 and 22 sort of total bedrooms, because some have two bedrooms.
Yeah.
Some of the units have two bedrooms. So there's 22 plus 99, so it'll be 121.
Total score footage of the units?
700 is the one unit, and it's, I believe it's like 1,100 for the two-bedroom units.
Okay. Any idea on what the, the monthly rent would be?
That's tough.
No is an answer, or I don't know is an answer, too.
I, I don't know because the answer to the question, whether it's assisted living, I think it's independent living.
Okay.
And, and so there's different rates for all that. It depends on what kind of care they get and things of that nature. So it's very hard.
How about low income or subsidized?
Oh, I don't believe so. It's independent, the government doesn't get involved.
Okay, no, okay. No Medicare beds or?
I don't believe so, no.
And is there an age restriction on these, or?
I don't think so, but more than likely, they'll be over 55 at least, adult.
Okay. All right. Any questions from the board? Hearing none.
I, I just wanted to add the comment as far as the zoning and the location of it. Okay, I understand that maybe the Mancinis have a senior complex to the north. Their property was zoned R six or R seven, I believe. This property was R 12. So it's.
It's a PUD, so.
Oh, it was a PUD. But I think initially, I think that was what the zoning was, and this whole block here is all R 12. I think this is where the highest.
I just wanted to answer the question. I, you know, I'm not going to criticize, you know, listen, if you get your shovel in first, you know.
Well.
Shame on the Mancines for dragging their feet, I guess. All right, thank you. Entertained a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Our recommendation must be based on the following standards: compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistent with and promote intent and purpose of the special land use, compatibilities with natural environment, consistent with the capacities of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use, protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and the adequacy of public access to the site. We may recommend approval this evening. Disapprove of the request or table it to evaluate the information further. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Viar.
I move to recommend to the Township Board approval of special land use application number 15-19 SLU 7, and instruct applicant to respond to concerns regarding the existing site conditions in a timely manner.
Support.
Moved by Viar, support by Moore. Is it possible maybe to put a condition that they'll receive all appropriate?
Yes, save that, too. Yes, that could be in the motion.
Okay.
Yes.
Agreed by the, take or get that? Okay, cool. All right, any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Viar.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu?
Yes.
Commissioner DeCicco?
Yes.
Commissioner Casali?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Good luck.
Thank you, bud.
Okay, next is site plan number 15-21, Thompson, I'm sorry, Thomas Caruso, an oil change facility at 5936 26 Mile Road.
Forgot my glasses in the green.
I haven't had them all day, my glasses all day. I just, I just went a lot.
My name is Jay Johnson. I'm from Noack and Frost, 46777 Woodward, Pontiac, Michigan. I'm here for the instant oil change. It's located on 26 Mile Road, the south side of 26 Mile Road, just east of mound. The 3,454 foot, square foot.
Tell you what, how we do this, because this, this does sound somewhat familiar, because we've talked to a few weeks, a few meetings ago. Can you just maybe indicate what changes were made from what was proposed originally and where we're at now?
Check, check, check. Most of the changes were made on the south side of the property. Initially, we had a entrance on the south side of the property. The owner thought it was very cost prohibitive to put the, the road in, because it'd involve a lot of concrete and a lot of improvements to, to mound road over here. And the only thing, other, other things to change are rain garden. Our rain garden got a little bit smaller because we had less impervious area. So the rain garden got a little bit smaller in the back, and basically, that's all the changes that were made to the site plan.
Okay.
From the last time.
Mr. Nguyen, your thoughts?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would agree that the, it's a well-done plan. Now that they, they eliminated that additional land that they didn't have ownership of, and they've just kind of consolidated all the improvements on this site. The only issue was that they need a setback variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals, which I think would, you know, we're working on that review now, but this site is so unique. If you could point out where the easement is, there's a triangular shaped site to begin with, and there's a huge easement that runs through the property that limits where you can place the building.
Easement's highlighted in yellow. It's 100-foot easement around a 96-inch water main. And to build around this water main, we had to do several special things, like it's a green, it's considered a green site, and it has a very low carbon impact. It features the water, all the water, there's no structures. It all drains off into the land and infiltrates into the ground, limiting the impact on the existing storm sewer.
And is that now? Is it the rails?
That is DWSDs. This is DWSD easement. 96-inch water mains, very big.
Used to be the railroad went through there, but there's, there's double easements on this site.
Oh, so they had a water underneath the railroad?
Yes.
Wow.
So limits our, our building area is very limited, and takes a very special building to be built on this. I think our site plan is a perfect fit for this particular site.
And they also have quite a bit more, they're limited, they're required to have 25 feet of green space up front, but you can see, if you can point out where the green space is in front of the building and right away, there's such a wide area in front of mound road that they've actually, or not mound, but 26, have substantially more open space in front. It's a classic variance request, actually. So the only other site plan issue was just making sure the light poles are 20-foot max, not more than that. So we just got it needed a note on the plan reflecting that, otherwise, everything else is fine.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner DeCicco.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan for Tom Caruso, site plan 15-21, subject to the submission of a revised plan addressing all department comments and approval of the front yard setback variance from the zoning board of appeals.
Support.
Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner DeCicco.
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu.
Yes.
Commissioner Casali.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Commissioner Viar.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Thank you. Good luck. You can let Mr. Morrow know that we did approve something else, so. Okay, finally, site plan number 15-39, Jeffrey Brinks, McDonald's at 56519 Van Dyke.
Jeff Brinks couldn't make it. I live at 1970 Crystalview Court in Caledonia, Michigan. I'm the area construction manager for McDonald's. Just, again, we just proposed to, we have an existing drive-through, but propose to put a side-by-side drive-through, which I think is pretty standard throughout the whole country, actually, due to us making it safer and more stack here to get away from the main roads, more cars to get in the parking lot. On an average, a drive-through, we can put in about 99 cars at peak hours. With a side-by-side, we do about 165. So eliminates that stacking area going into the, to road. So I'm here to answer any questions.
Mr. Nguyen.
Mr. Chairman, it's a very good submission. It's unusual that you would have a adding drive-through lanes. It actually makes site circulation work better, number one, and actually adds more landscaping on the site, which they've done. So it meets all the requirements of a very nicely done plan.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dalu.
Mr. Nguyen, we have large developments on that site coming up very soon. Is there a cap for like double drive-throughs, or how many drive-throughs can we make in there? I know it's McDonald's, we can't tell them anything, but the other potential tenants.
The issue is really not the quantity of drive-throughs, it's how they fit on the site and making sure that you have good circulation. And when the Kroger site came in, they have a potential not only for the, the gas station, but a couple of other units with drive-through. We, we did evaluate that. It's a very good question. It's, it's really how it works on the site, site by site.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Moore.
I move to approve the revised site plan for the reconfiguration of the drive-through lane for McDonald's restaurant located at 56915 Van Dyke, as submitted.
Support. By Moore, support by Turner. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Commissioner Viar.
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu.
Yes.
Commissioner DeCicco.
Yes.
Commissioner Casali.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Good luck.
Mr. Chairman, could you, could you leave your site plans for me on this one? Because I can just stamp and sign these, and he doesn't have to resubmit anything. So just leave them at the top and we're done. Thank you. No, no, you're fine. I just don't want you to have to resubmit anything, since it's perfect.
Planning Director's Report.
Couple of items. You have the monthly administrative report, which I don't think I need to go over in detail. We had a meeting with our master plan consultants last week. The surveys are all complete. They did, they did surveys of the residents, and I think we had almost 600 surveys. The business survey was a little less, quite a bit less, not as many responses, but they're satisfied with that. They also did a series of interviews with local developers to get a feeling for what, what the market is and the development climate here.